Let's see, Plarium is here, so Kathy's gonna take the official minutes. Slap that tape recorder.
It's gentle.
It's just gentle.
Just listen to the tape and record the whole thing and type it all out like I did.
No way.
It was this thick.
Yeah. Welcome our new wig-wag reporter.
Thank you.
Here comes Nancy.
On the call out to order.
Kathy Chandler, member.
That's another one?
Bob Gilbert, member.
Terry Waite, member.
Ray Kachaskin, member.
Cindy Picos, member.
Harry Norwood, alternate.
Wendy Rathgaber, alternate.
We started early.
No, no, that's just what we should do.
He went by that.
I put my time down.
You gotta get coordinated.
I pulled up and I went, "What? It's not me there."
We keep changing.
Three minutes fast.
Review and acceptance of the August eighth meeting minutes.
Twelve minutes.
Good job, Terry.
I guess Terry's not gonna have time to tell this. Do I have a motion?
I make motion except the minutes.
I'll second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted.
Sorry, that's kinda the same. It's a duck.
Duck?
Yeah.
Old business, Town and Water and Valley Transportation Study Discussion. As you recall, we had a transportation study on last warrant. It's like the town meeting, they don't get the freedom. Are we gonna submit another one? Do you wanna submit another one? And if so, what would we put on it?
I think Bill is the one that's hard on the transportation study and he's not here, so.
Is Bill coming?
I think if, my interest is the sidewalk and I guess people consider that part of the transportation study. So I, I think that in order to continue in the vein that we had been in the last three meetings, that if a transportation study would enhance the completion of sidewalk circuit in the town, then I suggest that we might wanna have one, yes.
And the other issue was the parking.
Parking.
Both private and public that we needed an expert opinion on.
Those are our two biggest concerns, I think.
Absolutely.
Were you ever getting a profile for what the sidewalk should look like?
I'm told we have one, but I haven't seen it. So you mean these cross-sections?
Did BPTS get a cross-section?
I'm told they didn't by one person and told they did by another.
Okay.
Were we going to have a meeting with the mountain with regards to the parking or, actually, let's ask a question. I'm gonna ask a question. Who owns the parking right now in the middle of town square? Who owns town square parking? Is it still Waterville Company or is it the town? I mean, is it the mountain?
Waterville Company owns it, but the mountain's responsible for upkeep, from what I understand.
Should we pull a meeting with them at least to come in and talk to us about maybe, if they can't tar it, at least get something graded in there so that the water doesn't build up in the winter months? And maybe we could get rid of some of those berms and expand the parking? I mean, is it worth them coming in to talk to them about it? Doing something not extensive, but a basic to enhance what we've got because come winter, it's a mess and we all know it.
Boy.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm thinking frozen tines. Mine is raised.
I guess I'm thinking that do we need to do the discussion and, and figure out what we are going to do before we talk about going to town, to the town? I mean, I think that we as the planning board need to figure out, okay, what, what are we going to do about the transportation study and the two, and the two things that we are concerned about, which is the sidewalks and the parking? You know, so that when we go to town meeting again, if, if, if we choose to do it this March or next March, that we're prepared with the answers that we weren't prepared for initially.
Yeah, we didn't really present them. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so do we need to have a subcommittee or something that, that gets together to, to address the sidewalk and the parking and maybe pull the parties together that, you know, like the, the Waterville Company and the mountain to talk about what are we gonna do, if anything? But, you know, so that we as a, we have a subcommittee that works on that, those issues and then we have a presentation to go to town with.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile having open communications. I just don't know how far it's gonna actually get us. But I, I think we should always be communicating, I just, you know.
But I, but they're two different issues.
Exactly.
And, and, and so, you know, I, I totally agree that we must be better prepared and we really need an idea of what we need to ask at town meeting in order to get what we want. But trying to get something in the interim that just says, "Fix it up better because this is horrible," is, is certainly not unreasonable to give a shot. Well, I'm looking at from a standpoint that they have equipment up there that they could bring down here to do some of that. I'm just saying it, make it more feasible for winter months. I'm not saying pave it or anything, but grade it. See if they can use some of the dirt and the berms to even it out, just to do a better job of what's there. I mean, it's horrific. You know, one whole section over by Black Bear constantly floods and nobody wants to use it. So those are all lost spaces. But if at least we could grade that, have them at least sit and talk with them, I'm not saying do it, but sit and talk with them and say, "Hey, look, can you help us out here? We, we all know we have issues with parking here. Can we grade this to make it better for the winter?"
Two things, I think. We're always dealing with the same issues, right? I mean, and, and I think it's because we have nothing, there's almost nothing to kind of fall back on. If we had a study and some of this either was proposed in the study or however, at least we could lean on that, for instance, like for the eight-foot sidewalks and sections or whatever. I mean, it'd probably be a little bit more muscle, I guess, to accomplishing some of that. I, I think at the town meeting last time, the things that were brought up like, well, we don't know who owns what and whatever, and that, it started being ridiculed.
Mm-hmm.
So I think a better, better, being better prepared going in, but letting them know the constant issues that we have to deal with and what we have to, I don't wanna say enforce, but to, to get our point across as to what we would like to see. And, and even that is based on what we're all thinking and have dealt with in the past as opposed to a formal, I guess, of somebody looking around and coming up with some kind of a plan that we can agree on and then proceed further.
But I agree.
I think you hit a key word there, enforcement. What do we enforce? I mean, our regulations allow for a hard surface, which I think they have. We just approved a hard surface for EPTS. What do you, what do you enforce?
I agree with Ray. That's the, that would be an issue. I mean, you have a meeting and all that, but you really, what are you going to say? Ask for a charitable contribution is basically amounts to it because you don't have any guidelines to go by or any kind of enforcement to do. But with regard to the traffic study, one of the reasons I think that it didn't get such good receipt at the meeting last year was that, I think that number that was put in there was just kinda grabbed out of the air. I don't think there was really much basis behind it. One of the things that we should do is get some sort of an idea of what we want and get some sort of an idea how much it would cost by, you know, talking to perhaps consultants and giving some sort of ballpark budget estimates or something like that before we just, rather than just kinda throw a high number at it, hoping that that might be used as some sort of a slush fund that can be arbitrarily used, I don't think that flies very well.
But I also think, Terry, that we need to have some sort of an idea, looking at something, saying, "Okay, this is what we're concerned about as a planning board. These are the areas that we're concerned about, we need to get numbers on. As far as I'm concerned, we have nothing to do with the park, the parking that takes place in town square." And that's why, like Nancy said, I, I feel as if we could talk to them at least and say, "Hey, Chris, can you come down here and at least just grade it and use, you know, the substances that are in there to even it out and make it more feasible for parking in the winter? That has nothing to do with town costs. That's their responsibility." And I think that is something that we've put off addressing, we've asked and asked and asked, and we've gotten nowhere with it. Nowhere.
I agree with Kathy, though. I think, I think we need to have a, a subcommittee that looks into it and at least gets some idea to bring to us first, to the board first, that says this, here's one or two feasible things we can do. I mean, I, I don't think we can go to them and just say, "Let's move the berms around" because, you know, that could create, who knows, the unintended consequences and the mud that that might create. So I think we need to kind of try to have at least some semblance of an idea before we talk to anybody and ask them if they can do something along those lines rather than just say, "Come down and tell us what you can do."
But if Waterville Company owns it and the mountain maintains it, I don't think maintaining is moving the berms around.
No, it's not. I agree.
And doing it over. Well, I mean, I think grading.
I mean, they grade their parking lots up at the mountain. I mean, grading?
Well, like, I, I think it will be difficult to, like, we don't have the enforcement and, you know, there are a lot of other myriad issues with the town square parking. Like I said, it probably wouldn't hurt to let them know that it's a town concern, but we can't forget also that the private parking has been kind of a nightmare for us, too, that the whole Green Peaks was coming back in for the next thing. I wasn't even sure how we would proceed because we haven't identified that private parking. So that's, we can't overlook that issue, that part of the issue, too. And that's where, yeah, with the subcommittee, we can get together and really identify A, B, and C.
So back to where we've always been. Where are we going?
But I think that, I think that if this board put together a, a smaller group of people that, that really tackled this issue and came back to us at the next meeting with their recommendations and maybe during that time they could go to the town, I mean, to the, to the Waterville Company and to the mountain and see if we could at least get it graded for the winter, you know, those kind of things. So that if we had a smaller group that addressed it to the Waterville Company and to the town, at least for the, at least for the public parking piece of it. But, you know, it, I think it is something that we are concerned about, we haven't concerned about for a long time, and let's, let's as a board at least get a group together that's gonna, that's gonna help us move it forward because we keep getting stymied here.
I think the board in general agrees with that. When are we set up a committee? Who would like to be on it?
Yeah, I'll hope with that.
I mean, we, we tried that committee, remember we had North Country Council come down here with you and I?
Well, I think instead of like trying to solve the problem, we just say, "Here is the problem and how do we get the help to solve it?" And I think we really identified with the problem. We can just find two and ten.
Yeah, right. National forests was the problem and there was no land. That was part of the problem.
Right.
Right. And that we faced.
That's all that, you know, we, we really did get into, even though we didn't have a lot to bring back to the board as far as solutions. We looked at all the problems from the different angles. And that's where maybe, I don't know what the process is with this, we go out and get bids from different experts in the field and then hone down what the cost would be to go to town.
You're doing one, Mark. Who else?
Well, go ahead. I will.
The time is limited, I can't help out.
I'll help out.
Yeah, I don't have a ton, a ton of time either, but I'm happy to.
I'll be transitioning back.
Somebody may wanna check with Bill, who I think is more interested.
You know, Mark, I have a question for you. The North, you know, the, the meeting we're going to, I'm going to on Monday in Meredith, would they offer any type of external advice? No? Okay. It was just a thought.
No, that's a rogue.
Okay.
Rogue claim, right?
Yes, yeah.
G, G Z.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, so we expect a report next month sometime?
Well, identify the problem.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Would it be park?
Don't forget that this is not just the mountain.
Right.
No.
Right.
No.
Exactly. Business in town square, the Snowy Owl Inn, the arena.
Athletic Club.
They all, no, they, they all share.
That parking, right.
So it is, it's, it's not up to asking the mountain to grade it. It's, it's everybody that.
So would we?
There is no assigned parking in that, and you're going to get this.
Yeah.
That's his problem, that's her problem.
So would we go to the, what's the organization?
We've been working on this for 10 years.
Years, right?
They have never, or shoveled in the ground, they have never graded.
I know.
Anything. They have never, they've repaired two of the parking lots in 12 years.
But I think that's part of our overall problem is the privately owned parking that's used publicly and that's where we need expert help to, someone must have had to have dealt with this before.
The best parking is your skateboard park.
Actually, the best parking is the Golden Eagle. They have tons of space over there, right?
Because it's owned by one entity.
That's right. That's right, yeah.
And until we do something about who is responsible so that, yeah, we don't enforce anything because everybody is pointing at everybody else and nobody's responsible for it.
At the end of the day, isn't the owner responsible?
No.
We've asked.
Not according to him.
No. We have asked and asked and asked for years.
He's got easements that say that the people who have the easements are responsible for the maintenance, but it's shared parking, so unless the town were to go to every business and say, "You have, you collectively have to fix this," I don't, I don't think it's ever gonna get fixed anymore.
What if we pulled a meeting involving owners?
But, you know, as I said, hard surface is allowed.
And the company on the mountain. Let me just start with Chris and Bill.
Yeah. And do a proration?
But it's, but it doesn't rain properly. It isn't maintained and maintained.
All the businesses pay common area maintenance.
They do?
Right, but I, I don't know if it's ever been addressed to be on town square.
Okay, but I agree. We need to have a meeting with them. Yeah. I don't know where we stand.
It depends, I guess, and that's something else we've talked about. Those businesses change in town square and the, the number of parking spaces that were set up originally were for a set of businesses in town square. Those businesses have expanded, contracted, changed use, and I don't think, we don't have any idea what the parking space requirement is for town square right now because are there more restaurants, less restaurants? We've got a catering business in there, we've got different shops, we, you know, we put the post office in there. That wasn't in there when the parking spaces were originally set out. I just, who knows? And while town square is given a lot of latitude with businesses that can be inside the, the ring, we've never tracked. We may have 50 more parking spaces there than we need, according to our own regulations and the businesses that are currently in there. I don't know. Does anybody know? Have we counted? I think that's part of this.
Yeah, I did it, I did it one time.
Well, we did, but that was like eight years ago.
Yeah, and that proved that we didn't have enough parking places, but, you know, most of the businesses are seasonal, they don't all operate at the same time, so realistically.
But I think that's part of what you have to do.
Right.
When you're looking at it, before you can go to the town and say, "We need a, we need a study," maybe we don't. Maybe we can just continue some of the laws and not worry about them and then tell them, "Please maintain these laws."
And the arena on a turn that weekend.
Okay, well, we expect.
We need, yeah, we've got some groundwork.
You wanna run it?
I'm not running it, she's running it. I'm part of it.
No, no.
Sorry.
Okay, so we look forward to the committee report next week. Her recommendation or identification.
Next month.
Next month. I'm so excited. Subdivision regulation proposed, proposed change. This is an article that we, we had in the springtime. We kinda lost, lost track of it because we were actually gonna think about adding a parking portion to the regulation, but we never really came up with a consensus on the parking, so I guess it's time to bring this, this proposed change back, back on the table.
One of them's building, one of them's the one that's doing the application for subdivision approval, buildings. This is the same as we virtually had discussed and agreed to earlier. No changes have been made. Bill had talked at one point in time about requiring clearing limits to be shown on the plan, so he's submitted this apparently. I did have a comment on this, if you're interested. Okay.
Under Article Five, Application for Subdivision Approval, basically what has been done here is, has been a paragraph added, it's now labeled Paragraph B, which says, "A plan showing the boundaries of any proposed forest cuttings of land alterations to accommodate the subdivision." Typically, they'll show the edge of clearing and so forth on a subdivision plan, but it's, I don't think there was anything mandatory that showed, that said, "Look, if you're gonna clear this lot, you should show what the edge of woods is going to be." And I think that's what Bill's trying to get at because there are a lot of wooded areas that if someone was to just come in and decide, "I think I'm gonna clear this lot," it would look a little odd and a little strange, and at this particular point, we don't have any requirement that that be brought under the planning board to consider the aesthetics of such activity. And apparently some towns have included them in their regulations, so Bill was suggesting this be done. The way it's added in here, it's under the heading, "Existing and Proposed Site Conditions," and then it starts with a site map, showing this and showing that, then there are other requirements, boundaries of the area, the parcel boundaries showing district to district. And he's suggesting that we write a plan showing the boundaries, and I don't, I don't think it's necessary to write a plan showing the boundaries. I think we can just start it as with the other paragraphs. Boundaries of any proposed forest cuttings and land alterations to accommodate the subdivision, keeping it in line with the verbiage of the, the other requirements of that particular site plan rather than, this would indicate a separate plan, and I don't think it's necessary to have a separate plan. I think as long as those boundaries are shown on the plan, that would be sufficient. Now, Bill's not here to determine, to discuss whether he really did intend to have a separate plan or not, so I don't know if it would be fair to go ahead with anything, a change without him being here, but that would, my observation there.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you and I don't think we need a separate plan.
I don't, talking to him last night, I don't think he wants a separate.
That wasn't his intent. Then I would suggest that we just eliminate the words "a plan showing B" and capitalize boundaries and keeping in line with the rest of the items.
His intent was to keep people from cutting all the trees down on the route.
Yeah, because Bill sent me that email on the clearing.
Yeah, we'll go look at it after.
What's that?
We'll go look at it after.
Yeah, okay. Okay, do we want to send, act on these, do we? Yeah, but then we schedule a public hearing and then we can make the change. Yep?
Yep.
Okay. We schedule a public hearing next, for next month.
Do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion? Yeah, let's have a motion.
Okay, I would move, excuse me, I move that, the wording.
That's okay. Yeah, okay, that, that stuff I'll get on that.
Okay. I move that the wording in Paragraph B, excuse me, E two B, in Article Five, Application for Subdivision Approval, be amended to eliminate the first four words, "A plan showing B," and that the word "boundaries" be capitalized. And that the, that the board move ahead proposing the changes to Article Five, E two B, and E three B, as shown in, I don't know what these are. The provided printed material with, came with the minutes.
I think we all know what you mean.
Because I know.
Well, you can fix it next meeting.
Well, I don't know what you refer to these.
Just as opposed.
I think that.
As opposed. As opposed. So I, we move ahead with proposing the change.
Okay. I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, so we'll schedule a public hearing next month.
Can I see the sub deal breaks?
Sub deals, yes. Any new business? Communications?
So, did you have a question about that side? Construction side?
Oh, I thought that goes privilege of the floor. Is that all right?
Communications, which is the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, ten-year plan meeting?
That's Monday.
Monday?
Yeah, I'm going.
Okay. Where is it?
Meredith.
Oh, that's not there.
No.
Committee reports on privilege of the floor?
Couple of things, well, a thing. It was, when I was here last week, I noticed that there's advertisement for.
It was, when I was here last week, I noticed that there's advertisement for proposed building lots on Bull Hill also, where a boat is building a second building over by the ski jump, you know, where BBTS is. And I thought we had regulations with regards to, I mean, we are so conservative with regards to realtors putting out things and removing things after they're done, and it was also noted in Facebook from some of the townspeople with regards to those signs being out there. I didn't think that they could advertise like that.
Those signs have been approved by the selectmen, they're, they're three feet by five feet, which are what we have standard, we've done on a development site, they're allowed on the development site.
Okay.
And realtors are allowed to put their information on there, as long as it is not in addition to the three by five.
Okay.
So, that, we had that conversation at the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And, and I know that it kinda isn't what we do, but it's what, what is allowed in our regulation.
Okay.
So, three by five has been a standard.
Okay.
Because there were, there were other comments from various people in the valley as well, and when I saw it, when I went by, I said, "Okay, as long as you've approved it."
We did, we did talk about that, we did the sign application. They originally had multiple signs up, and the selectmen said, "No," selectmen said, "One three by five sign."
Okay, thanks.
Are they gonna build a second building? Are they building a second building?
I don't know if they've submitted a building plan, I don't think so, I think they're just marketing it as an available lot before custom building. But I don't, I don't think they've turned in anything.
Did the building permit get approved for BBTS?
Yes, we will see construction beginning very soon.
Okay.
They met all of the criteria that we listed.
Okay.
Anything else, privilege of the floor?
Just, just going back to the parking lot situation, just reviewing the zoning ordinance mark, I didn't see anything that had to do with grading drainage. So, I would assume that if you were going to do something with these parking lots that are in not good drainage condition, that you'd have to refer back to the site plans that were originally approved or the...
No, I don't think so, I think it says in the zoning ordinance that you have to maintain them in good repair, and that's the section that we've always referred to and just decided not to enforce. I mean, we've, we've had the conversations about how far do you want to go in the enforcement? And everybody's been in agreement so far that they're okay the way they are, and just, you know, try to make them look better if you can. If you remember, Lou Crete came in several times and said they didn't have the ability to do that, and we said, "Okay."
Mark?
No, we, we had those conversations, don't remember again.
Mark, in the regulations, new development signs will have maximum dimensions of not more than three by three.
The selectmen have allowed three by fives, because there are multiple people, multiple businesses on them. And that's what they agree.
Mark, can I ask you a general question?
Yeah.
Do you know anything, like with the leases in Town Square, are, are each, well, Wendy, you would know.
I think I might know.
Yeah. Are you allowed a certain number of parking spaces in those?
Not in the leases.
Not in the leases, okay.
Yeah, and Terry brings up a good point, we don't have any site plan review, other than the original, whatever was done for Town Square. That would have been the only, unless they added something on, then they, they would have come back, but that would have been the only site plan review, and I, I'm assuming that the, one of a company granting easements for parking was done at that time, that those parking lots were identified at the time that the site plan review was done for the buildings, and, and that's been the part.
Is there anything in there that could possibly help us? I don't wanna say enforcing, but is there any, would there be any language way back then that would give us a little bit of teeth to having a book or something?
Well, I don't think the language, as far as the maintenance of the parking, I don't think that language has probably ever been changed. That's probably original to the, to the zoning ordinance, but it might have been more or less before, but I don't think it has.
It probably was one of those maintaining, but they're...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's just so vague.
So, right.
I don't even, I don't even see where it says that, I mean, referring to the landscaping and property maintenance?
Property maintenance, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't...
Well, that's the only thing, Terry, when you say, that's, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the parking section of the zoning ordinance that says it will be properly drained, it will...
No, I know, that's why I'm wondering, is, do we have the original site plan, do you think, or probably not?
We, we might have a single sheet, but I doubt that it, I doubt that it addresses the parking.
Really?
It's probably for the building. It's just, you know, nobody's gonna want the town to enforce, enforce it, what do we enforce, really? You know, we, we had a conversation, we wanted, Lou Crete was here, he said, "We wanted everything paved."
Yeah.
We sent them letters, probably six or seven years ago, that said, "Pave your parking." And they came back and said, "That's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, we can't afford to do that." And we said, "Okay."
I mean, I'm wondering, you know, if, if we looked into it, if there's some sort of other medium that we could use instead of paving with, for two minutes?
Oh, there are, yeah, there are all kinds of.
You know, that wouldn't be as, as expensive.
Stone dust, gravel, I mean, we, we had those, or pure steel plating, we've, we've had all kinds of ideas that we, that we, we've been, we still have to help somebody.
Well, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, and it's, and Bob, that's been the issue, who is the owner, who is the responsible party? Because everybody goes, that's their problem.
Well, Wendy just said, if I understood this right, that you pay into your lease...
Well, we pay in common area maintenance, and...
We do too, as the post office.
Right, and, you know, the, the buildings have always been priority. Yeah, because they, they have a lot of issues, so I don't know, even, just gotta recap, and, you know, even though we pay into it, it's not enough. Even for what's obvious that needs to be done, not even looking at the parking.
There must be a document involved in, somewhere that deals with the Town Square, number of shops or restaurants or whatever, and, I mean, if, if I wanted to open up a restaurant, and I wasn't guaranteed any type of parking, so you open up a business and the parking could go away, and what do you do? I mean, there has to be, is there no document anywhere that, that deals with parking and relationship to the Town Square?
I don't know, I don't, I mean, there's probably something in the leases that say, you know, yes, parking, but there's no, like, for this shop, you get X number of spaces, and for this, you get X, I think there's just...
Because the restaurants are, I mean, if so many seats, you have to have so much parking, right? Or, that's the theory. Or that's what's written, but, I don't know what's in force, or not.
Thinking back to the race, I don't really, about parking in that. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very general, as far as what the landlords will provide in terms of free access for the public.
Well, I put this, this together in the parking, this was dated 1/22/2007, and it had a list of all the things in Town Square and what their parking would be required. Mark's right, we never, you know, most of these things have changed, you know, attitudes and things.
I mean, if anything, we're at the lowest capacity in Town Square business-wise that we have been in a long time. We have far fewer businesses than we did even when we opened fifteen years ago, so we're definitely at a low point, requirement-wise, but, I don't know.
Well, in 2004 and '05, we did, we did parking studies, where the PD actually inspected
the lots during the weekends and holiday weeks and everything else, and if you remember, we had excess capacity even at those periods, where most of the Black Bear parking lots weren't being used, we were at like fifty percent usage at that point.
They were at a parking lot.
But we were at a hundred and ten percent up by the arena, where people parked on the snowbanks.
On the snowbanks, yeah. Yeah, they weren't working across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess the only thing that's ever gonna get that changed is some, some pedestrian or whatever, they're gonna have a lawsuit against whoever owns the parking lot because of an injury situation, I don't know, that's, that's the only thing that...
I don't know.
Might.
Well, we take it, we take it people who park illegally, and when they, you know, block fire lanes, and people pay the fifty dollar parking ticket so that they can enforce it. They do, and they say, "Thank you," and they, you know, it sounds silly, but...
Well, if they have the parking law, shouldn't you pay fifty bucks anyway?
Well, exactly, yeah. So, I don't know, I don't know that there is a good answer, other than putting all of the parking within ten feet of the entrance of wherever they're going, I mean, that's really what people want.
Valet parking.
Good opportunity, there you go, absolutely. Make money for the whoever owns Town Square.
Would work for those parking.
Yep, 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 yep.
Anything else I can add to the floor? Before we adjourn, I'd like to bring Bill up to speed on this motion, is recommended change for the subdivision, what you said?
I read it, yes.
We, Terry suggested we delete a plan showing the boundaries, just start with boundaries.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we would, intended a separate plan, and this wording would make it more consistent with Paragraph C, okay? And we're gonna schedule a public hearing next, next month.
Mark, did you raise the iss, did you fill them in on the issue over on Green Peak?
Uh, no, Ray, Ray and I were gonna go over there after the meeting, if, if you wanna bring it up.
Well, yeah, the, the, if you, if you, if you walk in on Nelson's path now, it appears, and I, I guess you're gonna go take a look at it, that, that, I'm assuming it was the Waterville Company started to clear land that would have been, my understanding would have been what they were proposing for Phase Two application, they've now withdrawn, and started to, it looks like they put like, like a gravel driveway or something in there, right? Now, my, if you read the, the subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations state that before you do any land clearing, you have to have approval. But we get into this catch twenty-two, which is, do you need, you know, we don't have a gemma regulation anywhere that says you can't cut the forest down. You know, if it's your land, you can, you know, in theory, just go in and cut everything down, then you get into like Terry's statement here, what good is it if you don't get voluntary compliance, because what prevents the Waterville Company of going and cutting all the Nelson's woods down right now, and then two weeks later saying, "Well, I'm applying," and therefore, you know, "I don't have to show you the envelope, it's all barren land." So, the question is, do we need some kind of a regulation that deals with, you can't just unlock, you know, and, and, and this is just fraught with all kinds of, you know, issues, you know, but on large tracts of land, can you just go cut the woods down?
Well, he also cut a big path going, I think it's for fireworks, they cut a big...
Well, they did, this is, we've, this has come up before, well, the fireworks was another case where they just went in and cut it down, and we said, "No, you can't do that," you know, but then again, if you actually look at our regulations, I'm not sure what prevents us. So, the first thing we're gonna do is go over and take a look at what they've done, and because they've left, I mean, there's like sewer pipes and stuff that are lying on the ground out there now, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what they've done.
As recently as yesterday, I, I did see a lawyer out there depositing gravel at the end of the...
Right.
The gravel, the road, now, they weren't grading it out, but it was being deposited there, now, there's nothing that says you can't bring in gravel and stockpile on your property, but it looks to me like it was intended...
Well, I'm not so sure you can't, you know, I, I think the intent of the regulations would have been that before you can start improving the property for the purposes of future developments, you need to present the plans and get them approved. I mean, that's clearly what the intent of the regulations say, but we've got this loophole that, that, that he doesn't quote, "Have any plans before," so therefore, can he go cut the woods? So, I think one of the things we're gonna have to debate, and I suspect it would have to be a general town ordinance if we decided to do it, that essentially some statement that says, "If you've got a piece of subdividable land," you know, that before, that there are certain, you know, you know, laying out the rules of what you can and cannot do relative to land clearing. Now, I'm not saying you can't, you know, go clear out brush and landscape and stuff, I mean, but when you get into general land clearing, in other words, you're, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna take out an eighth of an acre, and I'm gonna wipe out everything, every tree, every bush that's in an eighth of an acre, do you need, you know, or otherwise, what's to prevent somebody from filling a wetman? What's, we've had problems down along with people on the Mad River, right, violating the state law relative to clearing land adjacent to the river, but we don't have right now any regulation that would require someone to get a permit to do it, although writing such a thing and then specifying what it is you'd be allowed and not allowed to do is not gonna be easy.
You had mentioned last time when you first brought this up, that there were some towns in the area that do have such...
Yes, Holdenis does. Holdenis has a, they, they get within a certain distance of, you know, certain properties, and they do specify that you can't, you need a permit to land clear. But they seem to be cover everything, now, I'm, I, I don't know whether we wanna, you know, any, like, somebody owns a half acre building lot, are we gonna say, "You can't cut trees down, you know, enhance your view?" Because it's, it's just gonna be a mess, you know? But, but I do think, you know, if we, if our intent is to put some of these things in the regulation, if we don't deal with that loophole, whatever we're gonna do is just clear the property before they apply, so the regulations become irrelevant, and I, and I, so I think we're probably gonna need some kind of a document that says, you know, if this land is subdivitable, then you have to address, you know, what is your intent of clearcutting? Why are you clearcutting? And lay out some ground rules of when it would be allowed and not allowed. Or otherwise, you run into this situation we've got sitting out there, and we've had the fireworks thing, and, and those aren't the only, we've had a couple that have come up like that. Remember, he just cut the stuff down.
There was a whole clear...
He clearcut it out, right, and said, "Well, I don't have, I don't need approval."
Was that for the snow dogs or...
Yeah, the sled, I think.
The sleds?
They couldn't come across the golf course anymore because of the...
Yeah, so, I mean, here's that big swath too there.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's, so you're gonna go take a look at it, we'll have Chris take a look at it. My, my reading of the subdivision regulations, he would be in violation of the subdivision regulations right now, because it clearly states... regulations right now, because it clearly states you can't clear the land until you have approval.
This would apply only to subdivitable lots, in other words, single-family residential lots.
Yeah, I, I'm not, yeah, but then you get into, and, and the reason this is sensitive is because there are people that don't want Nelson's Woods cut down. They view that as being one of these kind of iconic views of the valley. And one of the roles of the planning board, as I read our regulation, would be, to the extent possible, we are supposed to preserve those things. But you've got this other lot, like along the edge of the golf course we talked about. Now, they stopped, they, they were going to come in and ask for the ability to subdivide and, and create separate building lots, and the issue becomes, do you let them cut those old trees that border the fifth hole down? I mean, some of the, you know, that screen that golf course off for everything. You know, I mean, it is part of the view of the valley, and, and, but I don't know how to write a regulation to, to do this, but, but it seems to me, we need to think about it. Maybe we can come up with something.
Well, I know there's something brewing at Golden Eagle right now about wanting to clear some trees to improve their views. And they don't, I don't think they own the property. I think the property they're talking about is owned by the Waterville Company and the town, some of it by the town, I'm not sure.
Well, can't clear the trees, but anyway, the, so that's the issue.
Well, that, the road, I'm pretty sure I know what you're talking about, that road extension.
Yeah.
Where it drops down a couple of feet. That was actually shown on their application, even, you know...
The, which one, the original or the second?
The, the original one, when we approved Green Peak 1.
But I believe it's outside the boundaries, isn't it?
It is, but it was shown on those, on the drawing, I think, in dash lines, so...
Well, maybe they're not. Maybe what they've done is fine. Yeah, then shame on us for not being more diligent about improvements outside the boundaries of, of what they were proposing, but...
Because when they came in for their consultation, we told them that we didn't want to see anything. If they were only going to look at lot, Phase 2...
Right.
And take off all of that other stuff that doesn't, that extends it beyond Phase 2, and that's when they withdrew their application.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we have to be more diligent when we're looking at these drawings, and what, what they're showing us, and what it really means when they show us something.
Right.
You know? Because in their mind, they probably took it with, I don't know...
So I would just ask some planning board to give it some thought as to what you think, you know, if we do anything, what would be appropriate? I, I don't know. It's a, it's a touchy area. I mean, I...
Yeah, it is, and, you know, as far as preserving Nelson Path, we brought that up also.
Right. No, I have this, in the pit of my stomach, I have this feeling, the reason they clear the lands out is because they don't want to get into a fight over preserving Nelson's Path, so the easiest way is to knock it all down now, before we can tell them you can't knock it down.
Yeah. Anything else on the privilege of the floor? We have a motion to adjourn. Make a motion. Terry, you have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.